Guys planning on making it over here?
Uh, well.
Well, we can get started here. We have a meeting to order. Start with our cold business, which is the administration revised job descriptions. Not sure where we're gonna pick up the conversation on these. Tell you, my thought is, Belinda, as I understand it, you're happy with the revised description, we're good to go. Pointing has come back, we're fine moving forward.
I think so. Yeah, my job description, I enjoy the accounts payable, I enjoy the payroll. I think it fits in with everything else I do really well. Krista's taken over water billing, I think she's doing a very good job with it. And that was, you know, she's taken over some other jobs like licensing and stuff, but that was the big piece she took over. She and I have been training together, doing water billing all year together. She's becoming more independent with it. I'm co-fully 2023, she will be doing very well on her own. So. And so far, it seems to be manageable.
I have, uh,
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead. Think Monday night, I asked, um, boy, I can't think of the first, yep. She was working the,
Oh, Tony was working?
Yeah, Tony, yeah.
Yep.
And she said, I believe, we had zero four thirty to six.
On Monday night, it might, could've been.
So is she, like, accounts payable receivable, or is she?
She's D M V. Motor vehicle.
So by having the Monday hours, if we aren't busy with D M V, we have to work with it.
She does all the scanning of the accounts payable. She does all the ordering of any office supplies, which works out well because neither of those were real rigid deadline. So when motor vehicle's busy, she can stint them on the back burner. You know, the motor vehicle girls to do something that would have a deadline would be near impossible.
Cause at the end of the day, I think some of these tasks that are on your job descriptions probably should've been on our administrative, especially maybe quite a bit of the H R task. It just, it almost seems like your job descriptions, you guys can probably do. But if you ever had a major illness or catastrophe or retired, I don't know who's gonna get better and do that. So I mean, I don't think we should load these job descriptions so heavy that they are achievable.
Well, one of the things that, and we've discussed before, doing is just having cost training on some of the critical things like payroll and some of the other functions so that not only two, but more than two, like say three people, like us three can entertainingly do certain tasks. And I think that's what we need to work towards.
I'm looking more at, you know, we have revised descriptions and the request on both of them is for some back pay. And I think that's the elephant in the room on everything here. So I think that's where we should start our conversation and just get that out of the way. And it's gonna govern where we go from there. Um, Belinda has crunched some numbers. Tarek, I know you've done some digging around and talking to like our labor attorney and stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to fill us in on where that's at, and we can take the conversation from there.
Okay, yeah, we had a discussion with the labor attorney specifically on doing the repointing, doing the, uh, market study to change the scale and discussion of the back pay. Uh, the first question that was asked was, you know, why are we doing this outside of a union contract negotiation? And, you know, I told her, I said, well, when we signed the last contract, which was October last year, we kind of had a, you know, an understanding with especially the public works that we will look into doing it. Because of the complaints about being underpaid for so long, nothing hasn't been addressed. We said, okay, let's at least get this contract out of the way. And we will, uh, look to making this right or correcting at some time in 2022. Well, that's why we're working on them. So she said, yeah, that's fine, no issue there. Um, we also looked at the repointing, uh, and the market analysis. Uh, there really wasn't an issue, an issue there. Like I said, the main concern was why are we doing this outside of a, we still have about two years left on the union contract. Uh, the issue came about when, uh, back pay was discussed. And she feels strongly that there shouldn't be no back pay because once you address the situation, you say somebody's being underpaid for a couple of years. Once you address it, it's from that time that you address it. Then they're getting the correct pay that they should be on. But you shouldn't go back in time uh, because then you're never gonna get out of exercises. Obviously gonna be something where you, you know, you'd have to go back and, and address. Uh, but I also pointed out, uh, you know, we have another situation where we have two employees that have been doing different jobs for a couple of years, more than a couple of years now. And because that, the jobs have completely changed, then that should, you know, at least say, you know, they have been doing different jobs. You know, and the repointing shows that it is the higher pointing on that job description. That, um, should also be considered for back pay. Um, you know, I, I think that it should be considered. She, she felt otherwise. She just said that it's a bad position to go into. And, and I mean, I think you had some more discussion, but that's kind of the summary of what I had.
My memory needs refreshing. Ron and Belinda, when Renee was done, assumed a bunch of tasks and there was a bump for, uh, how did, how did we compensate at that point?
That was two dollars an hour extra for the period that they were serving in that role.
And that lost two dollars went away?
Yeah. That was just one year.
November of nineteen to December of twenty twenty.
Cause Cherry started January twenty one.
December.
I mean, it's two years already, you know.
But no, and that's correct, but also it doesn't address the fact that Jennifer took on a heavy role after that. And there was no compensation for her for that time. My understanding, I mean, I talked to several people about it. My understanding is that a lot of the, the duties that were assigned were on a temporary basis or on a, you know, let's wait and see how things play out. But they've shaped up to be more of a, kind of a permanent position now.
Was there discussion at the time, like, you know, these tasks are on your plate? Was it a discussion of yes, these will be done, but there should be higher compensation? Was there any talk of that at the time?
No, it's not, not that I recall.
Just for Belinda.
Well, yeah, Belinda and Ron, correct?
Right. For the added duties, yes.
Yes.
The payroll and accounts payroll, Stephanie just left. I think there was just no one else to do it.
You know, it's hard, but something like,
I had to do it or we weren't gonna get paid.
When something like that happens, you're just kind of scrambling to make it work.
Yeah.
And then it just kind of becomes what happens.
Yeah.
I know policies and procedures met with Public Works guys, had a conversation with them. I wasn't able to be at the meeting, but I sat down with a few of them yesterday. We talked a little bit. Spent some time listening to what the concerns were. Biggest thing that, I mean, I was hearing over there is we need to, we need to fix it. There's a few ways of doing that. But also a big part of it is just acknowledging that this has been a problem and acknowledging the hard work that those guys have put in while it's been such a problem. And I've given a lot of thought to,
Anything one more?
Me and Brad. I've given a lot of thought as to how we've handled this in other areas. You know, the one contract that we just negotiated was the police contract where we gave a significant bump in pay to bring that up to a Margaret. Oh, yep, it's an actual.
There it goes.
Yeah, he's running.
He's chucking it, and I don't think he would unless across the ice. There you go.
There is potential.
That must be Andy.
Shane.
Uh, but no, I look at the police contract where we had that.
Shane's wrong.
Police contract had been below. And we didn't look at, I mean, we knew that that was something that was going to be negotiated with the upcoming contract. We fixed it. We didn't do any type of back pay. We just made it right going forward. In a lot of ways, I am inclined to agree with our labor attorney and say, we don't wanna set the precedent, we don't wanna do the back pay. But I don't wanna just slap all of our employees across the face and not acknowledge the extra work that's been put in. I still maintain that at least with Public Works, we need to move everyone to a grade eight. Uh, one of the conversations that's been discussed a lot is how do we acknowledge the certifications and things that have occurred? Uh, I would like to look into doing a certification differential or whatever we wanna call it. So a lot like the police have their night shift differential. Whatever base water certifications, that's gonna give you a certain per hour differential. Brad sent me a list. I think there's what, around four different certifications?
There is four, A, B, C, D. And there's a, and there's irrigation and a vital solids. So there's a number on it.
I think we would need to negotiate what, what those differentials might be worth. If it's twenty five cents an hour, fifty cents, wherever that falls, uh, that's probably something to sit down and, and figure out.
I agree, cause I know that not everybody has the same certification, but as far as I understand, a lot of people do the same jobs.
Yes.
Which is, you know, fair in that if they're doing the job, they should be paid for it. But then if we're paying for certifications, then there should be some kind of reason why.
I mean, Brad shared yesterday it's sixteen hours a year of continuing it for the certifications he has. And I think that time taken to be app, be appraised on what's going on is worth something. So there should be some sort of differential with that. I am good with saying, you know what, let's move everyone up to the grade eight effective end of the first payroll after we get this approved or whatever it is. And then negotiate the differential and backdate that to whenever this takes effect. Um, once that's figured out. I'm really torn on the rest of it, though.
Well, I have no issue with you, Rick.
No, I'm torn on everything. What's your question?
Okay, so I'm looking at this, uh, back pay for twenty twenty two, which has got Ron, Bob, Lee, Jason Rudolph. And he's got out here, grade, uh, grade eight is paid. And you look at Lee and Brad and Bob, their grade of eight is different than, uh, than Jason's. Is there's error in this?
No, he said a different step.
He's on a different step.
It's not on the, maybe it was step nine.
The rest are maxed out?
Yeah, the rest are maxed.
He's been here that long, yeah. That was the same thing with Lee, cause when I did the, uh, the difference between grade eight and grade six, I came up to a dollar fifty nine. And here the difference is since three ten. I'm just confused.
Let me think about that just a minute.
Okay.
To see if I, if what the, I go look at my formula too.
Sure. Well, you got, uh, grades, you grade seven, the same, twenty six, fifty seven, is that even for?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The, on Lee, you got grade six, twenty six, fifty seven. And on Brad, you got grade seven, twenty six, fifty seven. The same thing with Bob.
And same thing with Bob. So Lee, yeah, she's starting lower.
Oh, bet six isn't.
Yeah, maybe six is too high.
Six, I wonder if I have six as the wrong hourly amount, which is actually three ten of the twenty eight. It's probably twenty five or six.
And then the three ten is probably correct.
Yeah, it's probably twenty five or six.
That's what it is.
Normally I would've called that.
Hey.
Or we get a bunch. Well, and that, this really doesn't apply, but in a bigger department where you have ten guys in Public Works, you'd have enough certified so you wouldn't need a guy that wasn't certified doing jobs. He could, then the scale would've worked that we had talked about before. But beings that are all doing the same job, yes, I agree with everybody else that they're entitled to the same pay.
And that is correct. Grade six should be twenty five or six.
Twenty five or six?
Yeah. Which then would be the difference of three ten.
But if people are taking time, you know, to get certified, they should, should be worth something to them. Or why do it?
I mean, I guess I agree with Sean's, uh, little analogy of how we should take care of the certification number. But again, something I'd like to point out too, after the last, uh, contract, I believe we were supposed to be the first ones that got looked at. However, the, of police issues, they rose to the top. Just the way it was, there was kind of an emergency there, so that had to be taken care of. But I think you should take that into account also.
No, I recall we discussed, D D A had sent us a proposal just to do like the annual maintenance contract, which I think is in here. And we discussed that the first round of that would have been Public Works.
Wasn't there some wait time when we were just waiting for some information to proceed to?
Well, we ultimately decided that the cost was a little bit too high versus doing full study. I think we said we could go in-house on that.
Well, we went back to Baker Tilly. And they kind of, you know, jerked us around for a bit and we gave up on it. I reached out to D D A again. And then I had asked Ron, because his guys want to be compared to, you know, what, what they felt were comparable cities. So I asked Ron to prepare a list of cities they wanna be compared to.
So I feel like there was some time there where we were waiting for that information.
Oh, yeah, all that through months.
So I'm just gonna recap the history of how we got here. If anybody disagrees with what I'm saying, let me know. Renee left in November of, December of nineteen. November, December, I remember that. At that time, brought in Belinda, were named interim city administrators. Uh, and they were given a two dollar per, two dollar per hour wage boost to compensate for those additional duties. With that, some of what Renee was doing went to Stephanie, who was here at the time. Stephanie then left. And Stephanie's duties then fell into the administrator, Belinda, Jennifer. They all three sort of split up what was going on with the bulk of it going to, I think, Belinda and Jennifer. Also with Renee leaving, a lot of what Renee had been doing uh, were things that were on Jennifer's job description. So she started doing those things again. But on top of that, she was also doing everything that she had been doing when Renee was here to keep herself busy and active. So she started doing everything she had been doing, plus all of the stuff that she should've been, that Renee was taking care of. Uh, when Tarek started, we've spent a couple of years now trying to figure out who's doing what and how things are going to be handled and divvied up. Uh, the job descriptions that are before us represent that sort of, where do those duties have landed? I'll just say, um, as far as among the front staff, who should be doing what and taking care of things. They've been reappointed, things have moved up. Uh, Belinda moved up a grade. Jennifer is moving, uh, Jennifer's proposal would be also moving up a grade. Public Works was also reappointed as part of the agreement that Tarek talked about, where we'd have that looked at and do the, uh, the market study. With that, they're moving up from grades five, six, and seven up to a proposed eight. And we also promised them that in addition to doing that, we would do a market study to look at the wages. So for Public Works, it's the market study along with the repointing and the differential. I think from the conversations I have had that it, one of the biggest concerns, and I've seen it, is Jen is here at all of our meetings. She's put in a lot of time to make sure we're prepared and know what's going on. And for two years, hasn't really been compensated for that. She's been doing the work of a clerk without the pay of a clerk. If this were a corporate environment, I would have no problem with saying, let's bump up and let's do all of the back pay and figure it all out. But I realize we're not playing with shareholder dollars or even my own dollars. We're playing with the city's dollars. So I, I'm all in order with moving forward with the changes and the repointing and the calculation. I don't know what to do with the backpack.
It's really difficult because there's a difference between, you know, we're not talking about value. It's obviously all of us value everyone so much. And if we could, but if we're talking about what we can afford and who.
Well, that was gonna be my question. Where does this money come out? Are there funds like water and sewer or is everything at the reservoir reserves? Where's the money come from in this?
In Hanoi, Missouri.
Well, basically, water, we can't do deaths.
Well, basically, Public Works, probably water and sewer. And I would like to add Neil's comment.
Yeah.
It was, um, this was poor timing because we just came off of election. And if the residents find out that, sure, we just voted you in the office and you give the people, uh, raises and then the back pay, there are gonna be some pretty sour people out there and that's just the way it is, the way, the way we're gonna have to deal with it right now. I don't know from my first point. The next one is, what's this gonna do with the budget? Just, uh, uh, repeating what Neil said. The other one is, is, uh, you have to figure out where it's gonna come out, the budget. Whether it's gonna go through some of the C I Ps or we're gonna have to explore a layoff to make, uh, the budget manager. Those are the three options that I found. Um, and not any one of them is better than the other. I would like to say that except the one that seems more favorable is if we could adjust the budgets. Um, and I hate to say this, Ron, but tapping into the C N P, uh, stuff, that would probably be the less painful. Cause I don't want to send you money at layoff. I mean, I think when we have a strong middle class, everybody comes up ahead. But as far as the election, that's something that, uh, you know, residents, I really would have a hard time explaining what's going on. They're just, uh, this is why we put you in there. So it's a hard thing trying to keep everybody happy.
We can't. I would hope that, you know, the majority of people. Yeah. Well, and if, yeah, four for them. Um, I, I would hope that people would think about what they would want if they were in this position too. Everybody's been in that position or, you know, a lot of people. I mean, we can't. But I think it does come down to when it comes to the residents. You know, is, if this is something that's gone on for a long time and should've been dealt with before, that isn't their fault either. So, you know, we have to ask them to foot the bill for something that isn't their fault. But it's not our, the city's people's fault either.
Paul, just a quick question. Belinda, maybe you remember, when we redid the pointing, I think a couple of years back, I think it was, we had several people that shifted grades. I don't recall ever doing back pay on those shifts. Did we, I don't remember if I asked.
We did.
Pretty sure they did.
One point there is back pay.
That was a bargain for. Cause I only went back to the start of the contract if I recall correctly.
I believe so.
So then the other thing that I've talked to Tarek about, just as we talk about where the funds potentially become from. I don't know where we're sitting and where the P D is sitting. But one thing I mentioned to Tarek as we look at where this money can come from, is if we have overages in different accounts this year, we could turn around and we could take that money and eliminate the C I Ps accordingly with how much overage is there in next year's budget, utilizing the money that's over this year into those accounts. The money's already sitting there. This money just isn't going into reserves. It's going into those C I Ps to offset the costs of some of these things that you guys are talking about. I don't know what those numbers look like. Maybe they come in good, maybe they don't, I don't know. But when you start talking about where could that money come from versus the street, we're definitely not say the, you know, the reserves. It's, we have this money, we're gonna reduce here, we're gonna put in there.
I think there is.
But they're both the same pot.
It is, it is the same.
It's all the same pot. It's just numbers on paper.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. But it also, from, from an optics standpoint,
Right.
it looks a lot better than, you know, to your point of it being, uh, you know, right after an election. It doesn't look like, hey, we just keep everybody raising and reduce the reserves. Pay them at rates.
Well, we have healthy reserves, so, I mean, if you need to call something if you have to.
Well, if they're down, it won't be much. Too much was done enough.
I think we all agree that the grades need be adjusted. And we're in favor of, uh, changes.
Well, I'd like for you guys to consider the proposal from the D D A, whether or not I can proceed with that or not.
With the grade change?
Well, they're gonna do, uh, the pointing for the rest of the staff that were appointed and then the market analysis. So if you guys give me the okay, and I guess we're talking to Jennifer, I'll have to go to the next council meeting because we can't make a decision.
So if I understand this right, we're gonna, uh, be changing the grades and then also doing the D D A?
Changing, well, it's two things. It's changing, refinding the positions to see where, what grade they fall under. And then when we look at our pay matrix, what we call our table, see if that, because when we're talking to Public Works and their union rep was there, even if we bump up to a grade eight on the comparable cities, they're still low. So that means maybe our scale, we should adjust it because our scale is lower than it should be. And when I talked to the D D A, he's like, well, where do you guys wanna be? You guys wanna be the highest paid employer in comparable sized cities? Lowest paid or somewhere in the middle? I said, well, we don't wanna be lowest because we're kind of there now, but we wanna be somewhere in the middle. He said, okay, that's, that's what we're gonna work on. We'll try to find middle ground as to where we should be.
Well, I think we have to.
I, I think, yeah, the ones that we've reappointed have already come in different. The only conclusion I can reach is that Baker Tilly screwed this up.
Well, Belinda and I tried reaching out to them earlier this year. They were so unresponsive. And when we had them on the phone, they didn't really even care.
So they don't listen to that?
They, uh,
That was Baker Tilly. That was the company that did this for us the last time.
Oh, okay.
And I guess, when was the last, so the last time that something like this has come up, it had to have been in the past, like, three years because we were affected at Liquor Store and that's how long I've been there. So I guess I just have concerns that if this keeps happening, you know, we.
Yeah, this can be something that keeps repeating, I don't know.
Right, so I don't, but I don't, how do we make it fair while also making sure that this isn't something that occurs all the time because we can't afford it? Well, from previous history, it doesn't happen all the time. Yeah, it didn't, but, you know, now it's happening every few years. The company we used are not. Yeah.
I guess, in the end, you have to decide, what do we want? Do we want to pay our employees enough so they don't look at liens and, the internet? the internet?
No, this, I'm sorry, what did you?
Order of, I probably shouldn't say, everybody probably knows from my wife works, but compared to other colonies, they are very low. I, I, it's good for her because she's HR and she has job security because there's two to three employees per week. They got 207 employees, but still, that's quite a turnover. But they got the social services all out and it's two to three every week.
Belinda, looking at the Public Works numbers, Ron, maybe if you notice, but how much, just approximately, how much is paid out of each different fund for Public Works?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but I believe probably a good portion of the use is out of the general fund. I think, you know, Brad, the 50% is out of Public Works period. 50% of his salary is building officials, so that's not even affected. Of his 50%, I think it's pretty equally dispersed between general water sewer. Bob's is probably more irrigation.
Adam is probably 67% water sewer.
Jason would probably be, well, he's got a good chunk in airport.
Yeah.
But he is fairly large water, I think.
Yeah.
Water sewer. I think he'll get it quick.
Well, I'm just, what, on average, a lot of parks and street?
I'm sorry, what?
Lee, I thought it was parks and street.
Yeah, but all of us get, well, not all of us, but all of the people you're dealing with today, their salaries are percentage out amongst several departments and funds. You know, some of my salaries paid out of almost every department because I didn't pay all the payables for everybody. Kristen took, first jumped out of water sewer mine reduced because she's taking over water billing. So every year we look at that and that gets altered accordingly. We just reduced mine in airports and increased it in admin, but those are, well, general fund. There's still a percentage of mine that's water sewer. Jen, I don't think is any water sewer. I think there's maybe two or three percent of each of us that's EDAP.
I'm just thinking, as I calculate the Public Works stuff, I've got a number here. Would it be safe to say that it's like, on average, between the four, or excuse me, the five, that it's maybe split half? General fund and half water sewer?
I'd say maybe more.
I don't want to say.
I'd say it's probably over half water.
A little over half, okay.
So, one of us getting that, the one question I have is this repointing, is that gonna be for all the city employees?
Is that gonna be part of that?
Liquor store and everyone else, okay?
Yeah. I will not vote, I won't touch that 27-foot hole.
So when that's all said and done, this could just be the third of
An half a win.
Big, big wheel.
Well, if it comes out the way I think it will come out, then everybody's gonna get an increase of sorts.
So, by my rough paper math here, with the proposed increases, and this is not including the market study for Public Works, but just going forward, if everyone's bumped up as put on the sheets to the various grades, that's a budget increase next year out of the general fund of, nope, I did that wrong.
Come on, the total, or is it, Belinda will give you the break.
I've got the total. It's 31082. Assuming 60% of Public Works is paid out of the water sewer fund, that makes the increase to the general fund 19899. Which eats up all of that overage we had in our life, not including the market study. And then not including any other repointing. One thing is, I mean, the biggest sum of the increase is Ron moving from a 14 to a 17. But Ron, I understand that you've made an informal lease commitment to us that if we did that, that you'd likely stay around for a couple of extra years.
And I would like it off to 40 hours.
Okay, and, oh, and go down to 40 hours.
I don't like it.
That would save, because I calculated the increase at 45. So if that went down to 40, then the increase would be less.
I'm glad it's in a couple of years.
We'll commit to one for sure.
I'd do two.
I'll take you through the end of the question.
So I've got the guys here. Lee is paid 30% out of water and sewer, 15 each. Ron is 22 water, 27 sewer, 18 irrigation, so 50, 67% of the salary. Bob is 21 water, 25 sewer, 20 irrigation, so 66%. Brad is 15 and 18, so 33% of the 50% he's paid. And Jason is 13 water, 15 sewer, 10 irrigation, so he's at 38%.
What do you think, John? Well, I'm thinking that we, the ones that have been repointed, we need to bump them up and then include Ron. And then, if that's a year, I'll take a year. If it's five years, I'd prefer five. I'll take him until he can't physically, I'll take him after he can't physically walk.
Really over looking around.
Oh, no, I say, you know, Neil touched on it, you know, we need to keep our, we need to keep the staff that we have. I think we have a phenomenal staff right now and all of them do an incredible job of looking out for the city. And, yeah, that means some budget increases that we work or the plan. But looking at the labor market, what the labor market has done over the last year, we would be fools to not do something to keep the staff that we have. You know, we've been talking, what will, what will it cost us to get a new Public Works director? If we can find somebody in-house, probably not much, but we're still gonna pay for a period of trading that person, at least for a period of time. If we have to look outside of somebody we already have, and if we have to hire a consultant like DDA, that's 20,000 just to bring someone on, and we're still looking at all of the institutional knowledge that will have been lost in that period. I don't think it can be undersold the benefit to keeping Ron around for at least an extra year. I think the same goes for all of the Public Works folks, doing what we can to keep them on. We all take the rate and everything with you, whether it's cleaning up the parks, plowing the streets, making sure that the water runs clean when we turn it down. And then Jennifer and Belinda. The number of times that I call, either one in a week, you ask a substitute a question?
Yeah.
So, moving up to the pointing grades and fixing what Baker Tilly screwed up, and I, the more I look at this, the more I think Baker Tilly screwed this a couple of years ago, I think all we can do is fix it. So I sense that we have an agreement at least moving forward, but we haven't tackled the elephant in the room, which is the back pay.
And I kind of look at it that this two-headed dragon kind of grew up somehow. And if we're gonna slay that dragon, I think the first thing we should do is agree to the points and then try to work out an agreement for the back pay. So, as a council, we can find the money, budget it, like Paul's idea, and then take care of the back pay once we can come up with the funds for and where they're gonna come from. I think replacing the stuff that we have right now is gonna be as deep as the moor.
Yeah, we're gonna get hold of the price between these guys.
Mm-hmm. That's just my thoughts there.
The other thing is, I don't think we should delay it, the decision, because if we're gonna do something, it needs to be done in this budget and not the next budget. We've already set the next budget. We've got room in it for the increased wages, but the back pay should come up if we're gonna do this current budget. So that is, you gotta do it by the end of year. And I'll just say, right now, I'm not in favor of a year's back pay for Public Works. I could live with six months, but I think part of it was a little bit not getting the information too tired, but cities took four months and, you know. I, I think we could live with a better than six month. Now, can they live with that? It's the same.
Well, and I agree, we have pretty clear advice from our labor attorney that says, do not do that. And do we wanna take the position where we start going against our legal counsel?
And if we don't do the back pay, it would give us a little money to up the rates once we get the study back.
Yeah.
Because I have a funny feeling that's gonna cost 20.
I think so too. Even if our scale stays the same, we're gonna be looking at some worse grade bumps. I don't think the scale is.
It's gonna start, instead of 14, it could be 70. The top end, instead of 26, could be 32.
Right.
33.
Then how many, okay, how many employees will maybe consider not staying either? Because they'll feel like it's slap in the face because they didn't work a long time and not being paid enough. I think there has to be a balance. We can't just say, no back pay, I think we need to.
I agree.
Well, we are doing something by getting paid where it should be.
Yeah.
So if we're trying, you leave out that door right now and go to Old Spring, they're not gonna give you back pay, but they're gonna give you the 33 bucks an hour, step nine and 20 years experience.
You have to start over.
Trying to come up with a compromise where everyone's happy is the difficult part here and.
Most compromises, everybody's a little bit unhappy too, so there's that.
Well, that's true. I mean, that's part of the compromises.
I know, I also wasn't completely happy. Yeah, that went back, it stays.
I just, I don't know. I think about, you know, at the liquor store, there's things, there are things that we do that will probably at some point be done by an assistant manager if Bill gets one, you know? And then, do I have coworkers who are probably gonna be like, we should be compensated for that, probably? But, but they're not gonna get it and they shouldn't. But I think too, if, you know, somebody, if the hiring is then within, you know, you wouldn't expect to get compensated for something you've already been doing as part of your job. But then again, our job descriptions do say to just assist, you know, with everything that needs to be done. I just, it's, it's really tough when you're in a place where you, everybody's just working as best they can to make it work when you're in a time of trouble, of crisis, and then to go back and say, who deserves what for what they did? Obviously, we think everybody deserves anything we can give them. It's just whether or not we can afford it because we have the responsibility to the city too, to the people.
We're already doing back pay against the advice of the labor attorney. I think we should clarify as to what qualifies for back pay so that if this were to come up in the future, if they meet the parameters that were set, well, like, well, yeah, we could be four based on these parameters. But then, because I don't wanna keep the door open for like, Omega said, well, yeah, liquor store people are doing something different now. They want back pay because they're not doing that anymore. You know, what qualifies or what justifications can we put in now that will say, this is the reason why it was done this way now, but in the future, it's not gonna be there?
I think that is probably important.
That kind of opens the door.
I don't wanna have that door open.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, in a way, I guess it's open.
Yeah, I don't always, if anybody deserves the money, probably Jennifer for working, especially, because she assumed a lot of duties in 19 and then shared the, the.
And I think, as I look at it, I don't think there could be any doubt, Jennifer, that she took a lot of duties in 19. Because, you know, Jennifer was working full-time before Renee left. And then when Renee left, it's not like she gave up the things that she was doing full-time before. Denver's doing heck of a lot more on top of it.
I was confused about what you said before about that. So you said that Jen was doing things that already was doing things that were in Jen's job description? Is that what you said? And then when she left, so there were things that were in Jen's job description already?
Yeah.
But she wasn't, well, okay, so clearly that was.
And then Renee would have just taken and dug herself a lot of.
An immense job description if she was already working full-time. But I guess, so are there things that Jen in particular, that she did, that Renee had done, but were not in her job description already?
Don't you want to provide some insight?
I don't know what.
Some of the stuff that Renee was doing that might have technically been on your job description?
So, were you doing things that Renee was doing that were not in your job description? I'm sure it's hard to look back.
Well, her entire office was not in my job description.
Right.
But that wasn't just me. I mean, Belinda and I did this as a team.
Yeah.
But the bigger thing was when Stephanie left, that was a position, what Stephanie and Renee were doing together was HR, payroll, and comp payable. And when Renee left, it got put on Stephanie. When Stephanie left, nobody, nobody was appointed those, those duties. We did them so the city would survive. We tried to hire, we didn't get anybody. Then we said, the council said, I think it's, I think it's easier just to pay some overtime to get a spy until we get a new city administrator instead of trying to hire. So, we've actually saved the city money by taking on the duties for these few years where you didn't have to hire somebody. But the, you know, veterans got paid, the employees got paid, we hired, we fired, we, whatever we had to do. But those are the three biggest things, was comp payable, payroll, and HR.
And those were not in your job description, right?
No.
Okay. That was just, I just remembered that.
And the back pay on here too, I, when I calculated this, I went back to November of 19 for Jennifer because that's when she started a lot of excess duties. On mine, I didn't do it until 12 of 2020 when that $2 an hour ended. Because it's not right to go back and ask for back pay, but I was getting $2 an hour already.
Maybe that back pay should only go to when Stephanie left. That's when you really picked up the extra jobs.
October of 2020.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
And mine started December of 2020 is when I started mine.
I think that's fair. You take over some of this, John.
But there was a lot of admin duties too that, you know, I was compensated that $2 an hour for that from November of 19 until the end of November of 2020, still right here. But in that timeframe, I would never have been able to get done what I was able to accomplish in that role without Jennifer, neither taking on some of my duties, managing the front office, taking on things Renee did. We muddled through how to get liquor licenses done because when Renee left, they should have already been started and almost done and they hadn't even started. We had no idea, so we were on this full of the. We had no idea, so we were on this phone with the feds, with the state, with, you know, we found letters from the IRS saying that we were, we owed the IRS eighty-five thousand dollars that we had to try to figure out. There was just landlines everywhere. Everything we touched was a phone call to the county, to the state, to the feds, to somebody to find out where it was at. We dealt with, the city administrator in Sartell gave us a lot of assistance. But there was just so much Jen did on a daily basis to get us through that first year before our target.
Well, I think it's not...
You can't even list it off.
It isn't like, you know, because things happen and people leave or people, you know. But this was, there were so many things that I think came to light after that that weren't done, that needed to be fixed, that were years in the making. I don't think it was like an average transition.
A lot of fixing to do.
We're still trying to fix it.
We're still fixing it.
I was recently not surprised.
Yeah, we just had the error issue.
Well, and we can't give bonuses.
No.
That's frock of a bomb.
I think you have to call it something. It's like with the public works guys, I was asked, Tarek asked me, reaching out to the editor on like an incentive pay to do the licensure. And you can't really call it bonus, but you can give an incentive pay to the public works guys if they get a licensure. And it can be a lump sum, but it has to be written in the union contract or a policy.
Yeah, we brought that up because like they want that lump sum to be a bigger amount than what I was thinking. So I'm not going to go down.
No, just answer the question.
Yes, the better way to do it is to come up with an hourly.
Kind of do the differential later.
John mentioned.
Yeah, that's better.
Well, I'm thinking, looking just at the public works stuff for a second. We did indicate when we signed the contract that we would look at doing the market study. And that was contemplated. We took some steps towards doing it and then it kind of petered out a little bit. And now here we are because it's continued to be an ongoing concern. I was thinking timeline, knowing how government works, we probably wouldn't have gotten anything through. And I don't know when we first started discussing it, maybe it was last summer. I'm thinking going back to like November first. Thinking realistically, by the time the market study would have been approved by the council, completed, and then put into effect, it would have been around that, like October, November time. So if we bump up the grades, do back pay to November first or October one, something like that, we're basically putting ourselves on the schedule that we had initially promised. And then, once we give the market study going forward, then that will just take effect then and move forward.
So we're only talking about a few months back?
We're only talking about a few months back pay and only based on the grades.
Let's make it last quarter, so it'll be October, November.
Okay. And that, that I think it's just, it's here in the advice of our legal counsel, which is saying, you know, there has to be some good reason. I think a good reason is that this is something that was implicitly marked in for. But I don't want to do it again. I don't want to do it ever again. So we need to acknowledge as a city that there are no implicit margins in the future. It is what's in that contract and that's it. Because this is what got us in trouble the last time with the twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen agreements, whenever it was, was that everyone in the city was told, oh, we're going to complete a market study before the contract is signed. And then things weren't even sent out for appointing until early twenty twenty. So then we were going, huge wants of back pay because of what had been promised and what's not off on.
Well, I think initially, we were going to be ahead of the place. So actually, we'd go back a little bit more. But I guess when you're talking about back pay, I guess I'm fine with thought giving me the back pay. That is, so you cross me those numbers out there, if that helps out. And then after, we're just going up to three six. Maybe our number, PD wasn't anything outside of their own contracts. But we were still going to be ahead of that. Initially, when that contract was completed, we were going to be the first ones up to get reappointed.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the PD hasn't, just that PD was done on their union contract. So it's done for the negotiations. Better said, we're saying, go to the expansion.
Well, can we do that? I don't know if I want to, I don't know, on out of things.
So what you're saying is that your back pay, you do want to give up for the others to get?
Can we even do that?
Only. It's a heck of a deal.
Well, I think you're part of it is looking at, Megan asked the question, can we do that? I think the answer is yes. Because, and as crass as this might sound, Ron's not subject to the contract. It wasn't part of the union agreement that we would do the market study.
True.
True.
So I think if we're looking at sort of a legal justification for not doing back pay for Ron, that's how I would see it. Does that make it right? If Ron's saying it's right for him, then it's right for me.
I agree.
I take that as a sign of excellent manager being willing to waive that for the benefit of his employees. My sense, and Tara, I don't know if you can confirm if this is true, but I think that with the job duties among the admin staff, things seem to be working out pretty well the way they are now. And we're still trying to figure out if there's a better balance between who's doing what up there. But job description wise, this seems to be a good fit.
Yeah.
My concern, and I certainly understand the sentiment, is Jen has said that if we don't do any type of back pay, she'd rather just stay with the job descriptions she had and not take on the extra work. I think that's totally reasonable. I worry about that because we have a system that we've now grown into where all the work is being done, like, the work is being divided the way that it is. If Jen doesn't do this work, we might have to look at taking on an HR person, which is going to cost us more than they'll figure out. But we also have a situation where when it got reappointed, DDA said, well, Jen's job as it stands shouldn't be at the grade nine. It should be at eight, excuse me. It should be at like a six or a seven if I recall correctly.
Five or six.
Five or six. Which I think is underselling all of the work that she has. But that's neither here nor there. My concern is that if we go back to that old job description and stay there, do we have to bump that down? And I don't want to do that.
You don't want to do that.
And you take that risk with Bruce, too.
I don't want to take that risk.
Well, I think the answer is very frontless. As hard as it may seem.
It's not our money.
That's why you get comp back pay, Sean.
Comp back pay?
Do we?
If this were my money, I'd double it and throw it at Jen.
Amen. What's, what's fair, you know? Like, between everything we have to look at, it not being our money, but with, you know, the city expects things to be run, you know, people expect things to be run to a certain standard. So what's fair to people who keep it that way?
And that's what we're trying to decide?
Right. That's what I'm saying. Like, it just comes down to like, I guess, what do we feel is fair?
So our suggestion is that everybody who looked at their grades that they were going to be pointing to, that were Linda, Jen, their back pay had taken out of the general fund or wherever it used to come from. And then as far as public works, with Ron being so gracious, it looks like that would cover the other four, where they're back paying. That way, we're all happy. Ron may not be as happy, but...
Please, committee?
So they are compromised, or a heck of a deal you got going there. You don't have, you didn't have to do that.
I think the biggest thing, and this is me making assumptions, is that Ron's earning forty hours instead of forty-five.
He's happy as God will have.
He says for you.
He'll schedule his.
So where does the squeeze muscle?
Does that mean six months for your back pay on that? They have all fingers here.
I was, I was looking at it first.
I don't know. We're not even talking on both sides. We are talking on both sides.
Yeah.
But I...
There's a balance.
I don't know how we get there. Listen, well, my understanding, Tara, you talked to the public board, and then you won, but my understanding is that she's not saying that we necessarily can't do this. She's just saying it's a really terrible idea for us to do this.
Yeah. Because of the precedent it sets. And because she didn't see any justification for it.
Well, I think the justification is the precedent we've already set.
Yeah, she said we should move away from that.
Well, and this is it. I'm not doing it anymore.
But that's why we have to say, why are we not doing it anymore? Why are we just trying to do it now? That way, when this comes up again, because it will come again, we'll say, no, we're not doing this again because of this, we have that justification.
Because we've already said that we will do a market study and we're doing it. We're in the process of doing that. So when that's done and their appointing is done, that's their new job. We are going back to what they, because we are taking care of it. Where this fell by the wayside and didn't get taken care of for almost a year.
Well, that is, well, it worked for several years for Jennifer and you and this.
Where this is, you know, the other employees in admin have not been here as long as, almost, because that's better for a limited, as long as all the public works have.
I mean, I've heard other, other staff here saying, well, why can't we do back pay? We've done it before. So I mean, that, that door is not open.
Well, and they also have, I mean, we just changed job descriptions for the other few girls that work in admin, and we didn't do any back pay there. Because we just sort of utilized, we said we didn't think those things were going to point to. Well, if we're repointing everything and those come back higher.
Then that will be their...
Well, we repointed one of them and it was just not the same. But the reason why, if we get a bump or everybody's responsible for doing the market study, the market study says, everybody's, the scale is off, raise the scale, and everybody gets an increase. But that'll be effective for the time that we get that study back and you guys approve it. There's no back pay on whatever the market study is going to be.
Right.
That was correct.
Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Almost maybe there was a pause. You've got no idea.
The last time Kristen's was reappointed, it did have watermelon on it already, too. So it was reappointed with that, that big job on there.
So it's a reward, is that right, Kelly?
It was.
How, how long is the study that was, I mean, four weeks or?
For the market study?
Yeah, the DDA said three to four weeks, though, that could be done.
A part of me almost thinks we should wait till that's done, get it all done in one sweep.
Now, if we're going to do back pay for these guys for this year, it needs to be done this year, not next year.
Because that's not related to...
And it's not related. They're all done now.
So if you want to say the scale and the appointing itself, wait till everybody's done, sure. But the back pay is independent of that.
Yeah, but this back pay was figured out, the new, new...
Figured rates.
Oh, for public works, yes.
For both. So if you're not high school math, if, if, put here, Bobby, Jason, and Brad, were to get the full back pay, it will still leave twenty-two hundred dollars for Ron.
Ron could get always. Ron, Ron has said he'll do thousands back pay.
So if we required that he would give up, they all, your back pay, there'd still be two thousand left over for Ron. Well, that's a good boss. Other places.
Yeah, that's why he agreed to stay on the five years.
I'm just thinking of figuring out.
No, just not four hours a week.
We were three months. We go six, so you really think we should go here?
Let's not push it.
What is the recommendation?
Because we have to have one for next year.
Recommendation is nothing. What level higher?
Higher. I keep, I realize I'm talking on both sides here, and I, it's because in my head, I keep going back and forth between the two positions. But I worry if we go out and we repoint all of these job descriptions that everyone has now by this new company, they're going to come in higher and then we're going to have a big, we're going to be shooting ourselves in the foot because we paid our back pay to some and not others. And the precedent that we've set is by saying, well, we can't be repointing what we're doing now, so you should have been compensated for that.
So instead of paying back pay, let's use that money to get everybody on the, well, like, public works that was, I think thirty-two fifty was the average. Let's shoot for that.
But what about the people that were, had their job description changed? And they want compensated for that differential? Would you treat that the same way as everybody else who works out of the case, Rick?
But I think that's a tough discussion to have because when, from my understanding about public works, if this is what your job description is, yet there is something that really needs to be tended to, I see highly unlikely that they're going to say, it's not my job description, I'm not going to do it. They're, they're just going to pitch in.
That's what everybody here did, though, when Renee was gone.
Well, I've never heard anybody here say no to something. Or maybe Paul.
Well, that's why, that's why no matter what job...
Someone's going to say no.
The last sentence of any job description kind of is worded like, whatever needs to be done there are supervisors discretion.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
So at the end of the day, why not have a one-sentence job description? Do what your supervisor says.
Yeah. I, here's where I think I'm landing. Public works, we bump up immediately to grade eight. We sit down, we open negotiations on the certification differential. And we agree that that certification differential will take effect at whenever this pay rate takes effect. So we might not get that certification differential negotiated until February, but that we would be back dated to whenever. Because the certifications are already in place, they've already been earned. Right now, they're paid by, by the guys being on different grades. So if we're bumping everyone up to the same grade, we should look at backing that certification differential up as well.
Well, we haven't discussed the certifications.
Right, that's something that we have to sit down.
That has to be actually measured.
But I'm thinking, you know, Neil even said earlier, October first, I would be okay with that. I'd be okay with going to spark back to six months. But we do that, and we get up to the grade eight, we do our market study, but the wages with the market study take effect immediately with no back pay on the market study. So the back pay would be going from the grade seven to the grade eight plus the certification differential, but not the increased market study. I think that's a happy medium between recognizing the issue, but not pissing off our labor attorney too much and not setting too much of a precedent.
I think the market study, whatever it comes out at, which might come in higher, that takes effect when it takes effect, there's no back paying that.
Right.
That's the wrong, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking. And that, you know, how we differentiate that we're not setting the precedent is that this was bar before that we could take a look at this and do it. That's... That's, I mean, it was there, it was agreed.
We did last October, agreed to that, yeah.
Uh, I think for city admin, there it's harder for me to justify back pay. My proposal is Belinda moves up to a grade eleven, uh, with no back pay, Jen, we move to the grade nine, and we look at six months. And the justification for getting around the orders and everything there is Jen was not compensated since Renee left. So we're looking at doing some, something as showing the acknowledgement that extra work was taken on.
Especially after Stephanie left.
Especially after Stephanie left, yeah. While also still recognizing that this isn't our money that we're spending, so we have to be conscious of it. Jen, I don't know how that feels to you, I'm just sort of throwing it out there.
So you're saying, Belinda, we go to grade eleven with back pay, Jen would go to grade nine with what?
Six months.
I'd have to think about that, to be honest. Because we actually did a whole other person's job. We did not have to rehire, we stopped the rehiring process, actually.
And that was in twenty-twenty. Great.
Stephanie left in October of twenty-twenty.
So all of twenty-twenty-one and all of twenty-two, Stephanie's job.
She was a part-time...
Yep, and then the other piece that Stephanie went to, Renee was doing.
And Orme.
Wasn't she, was she half-admin and half-police?
Yep, so Stephanie was doing half-admin, which she didn't do, Renee did, or Randy did. But when all those three people left, that's what landed on our backs. We were physically taking on other people's jobs that weren't on our job description, nor whether a person had to do those jobs. That's the only reason that I'm standing up for this. I mean, I'm not a fighter, everybody knows that. And yes, it does affect me. Um, I love working for the city, but this is the first time in twenty-two years that I have felt that I have been taken advantage of, both Belinda and I. Because we got the city through hard times, when nobody asked us if we wanted to do them, nobody said, you know, volunteer to do them, we just did them, and the weight of the city was on our shoulders, to get vendors paid, to get people hired, and to pay employees. I've never changed my story, I had two council people, a city administrator and consultant, tell us that there's nobody that would ever, you never hire somebody to do this. I get that, it's a lot. I get it, and I'm, I'm okay with going back to my old job, but then you will have to hire somebody to do what's, what I am doing, or leave it to somebody else in the office. Because there's not anybody in this room, in any other department for the city, or anybody in any other job that's not government, that would take on all those responsibilities and not be compensated for them. And this is separate from the public works, this is way separate, they, that's something different. But if you, how do I say this? If, if you were somebody that, you know, I can't even think now, but that is the reason I've kind of put my feet in the stand, in the sand. I will ever fight, I'm not, I, I barely stand up for myself, but this is the first time that I feel that we have been taken advantage of for doing the extra work. Nobody else did.
Then it's our justification, they took over, so...
And I know you appreciate it, but this is extra work that we took on, that we juggled. Yes, it is stressful, yes, I get it, and I know Neil was very bullish, running out. I, I get that in six months, we're gonna reevaluate our job descriptions to see if we can continue to handle it. I believe we've got some things in place that are making things easier, they're making things more consistent, they're more, more fair, um, that's what maybe makes Belinda and I a good team. But I'm okay, if you wanna save the money, I would go back to my old job description, but that means I'm not gonna do those jobs, and because underneath duties as assigned, or have somebody else do them, but then let's give it to Jennifer, because we know she can get it done, because that happens a lot. So that's kind of where I stand, I mean, you can take it from here, it's fair.
I think that's justification for us, to our turn, that they took over another person's job, a couple of people's jobs, that we would have had to hire someone at more than this seventeen to eighteen thousand dollars. No cost is more than that.
And that's been for two years. I mean, we pretty much gotten free labor for two years.
Taking over anything in twenty-twenty was...
Well, we knew this was gonna be our opinion before we even came in here. But I do believe that, um, to keep the work cohesive, that's my position on the council, that we get full back pay. We could be giving ourselves a lot of big, big role if they decided to leave. And that's my position on here, and that's what I would suggest, hopefully that others could agree with it.
What are we gonna do if the other admin positions come back at a higher grade? Because they've been doing that work, are we going to back pay them three years too, or...
I, I think what we should do is ask Jen and Belinda what they wanna do with this. If the admin wants to come back to hire, it's a major issue.
One of those was already appointed by DTA.
And you can handle the same, yeah.
Came in the same grade.
And the other two positions that we just approved, um, they had very, very minor changes, like, just, I mean, very minor changes, and they just got back, like, two months ago on.
And their job description's not changed?
No.
My problem is the public works didn't change when they're bumping up two or three grades. And, yeah, one was revised by DTA, didn't move, but where are the other two? I think Baker Tilly screwed Boochon doing our wage study or our appointing, and I, I wouldn't be surprised if things came in higher.
We need to, that's not the employees' job.
Well, I know that.
I think everyone's gonna come in.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna see a lot of bullshit, but I think the difference is, in the ladies' case, you've got another job that was taken on, and in Public Works' case, you've got an agreement within the union contract to look at it. You don't have that with the police department, and you didn't have that with the other admin staff. Also, that's, I mean, to me, that's where that distinction is made, to say, we're gonna do this, and you're gonna start at this point, there is no back pay associated with it, this is just, it is the way it is, we did not have these agreements with you. You know, where we did, we had other circumstances outside of that, with the other admin and public works. And I would think that with the back pay with Jen and Belinda, that, um, with those figures, if they decide to, if we decide to be in that, and they decide to accept that, then it's full, well, not complete, that there's no negotiating after that. If the wage study comes back, and then there's more to be had.
But whatever's agreed to, whatever's agreed to, the bill has to be closed on back pay in the future, then.
Yeah.
Even at this point.
How much are we talking, because Paul, you're saying full back pay, what does that mean to you, what time, and what are you saying? What figures are on those sheets?
Seventeen thousand.
Almost eighteen.
Almost eighteen, seventeen, uh...
Yeah. Paul?
I recognize, I don't know what the best way to show it maybe is, but I know that the two of you have done an incredible amount of work, and I do want to recognize that. My biggest concern is that it's a lot of money that, yeah, probably should have been paid, but it's not my money to be playing with. And I, I just wanna make sure that we're being cognizant of that as we make this decision. But it, it can't be understated either, that literally you dug a mountain out of that office when they left.
You know, yeah, I don't think that was a typical situation of, you know, of somebody left even abruptly, you know? Because normally those people would have been keeping on top of their jobs to an extent where there would not have been all this exit work to do. So I don't know, it wasn't a typical situation, I don't know that it's gonna call for a typical resolution. But it's also not our money, so what do we do?
Can I ask you, LaShawn? When you guys made the decision to not continue the hiring process and bring somebody in at thirty to forty to fifty thousand dollars, you were doing so at, with in mind, the money and, you know, the citizens' money and the fiscal responsibility you guys have. I think on the back pay side of things, that's just simply acknowledging the work that was done and the fiscal responsibility that was shown to get to this point.
And we still save twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Yeah. When did Steph leave again?
Twenty-twenty.
October twenty-twenty?
October twenty-twenty, she quit doing the police and admin, she still was a part-time labor star clerk, but that's...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did she keep coming in till, like, December?
No.
Anybody for payroll? She came in just for payroll.
Sunday afternoon, her and I met every other week for a few months, I think.
The, uh, if times were different, things would be different too. Good help was almost impossible, though. But if, if good help was available, one or two part-time positions would be a assault. Down the road, I'm afraid that's what we're gonna be looking at.
But we didn't do that when people left, we just used the staff to have.
Maybe we may have been doing that.
We did, but it's also saved money.
But here we are.
Yeah, but even if we paid them, we're still saving money.
Yeah.
Hiring part-time employees is just an open, another headache.
We are, right.
Yeah, I know that.
I mean, we can look at who made a mistake when, did a bad plan, but it doesn't change, we are, we're here now, we need to deal with what's in front of us, not what's, has could have been done differently. And I think if we're taking into the future that there's a crisis like that again, it needs to be nailed out pretty explicitly, who's gonna get paid for doing what? But as far as the situation goes, we're here now, and we need to make a decision based on that.
Now, so, did your job descriptions, if this is in effect, was Kristen going to be doing the minutes?
Then she, if, if, if this job description would be approved, then I would not be coming on Monday nights to save money unless I was asked, or as long as anything would come for her, um, then she would be taking the minutes, because she's over here.
She's okay with that?
Yes. Unless, unless we wanna change that.
No, she agreed to it, so, and she does have a job, I don't know.
She didn't want more money, or more points, or...
Well, we...
She was already on her job description to back, fill me, to do the minutes, it just says to take the minutes, no? But it always had, like, to, to do it when I wasn't not here, like, if I was here, it was already on her job description.
And she could get reappointed higher, we don't know.
Sounds like everybody wants to go ahead and get...
Okay.
The public works was already agreed to, right?
All right. Brad, you're here from Public Works, the pod is to go back six months, how does that feel?
And have a discussion on the differential for certification sometime early twenty-twenty-three, which will be dated back to whenever this starts.
For the certification, so much in all.
It's better than nothing, I guess, I don't know. So this is where I get confused, if Ron has already offered to, probably for the full year, I don't know whether we're talking about six months.
Uh, because we don't know where the money's coming from.
And at the end of the day, it'd be nice to save a little bit for when the study comes back, because...
Most likely be higher, yeah.
Unless I get struck by lightning, I'm not sure where it's coming from. We don't have a December budget meeting, do we?
Um, yes, no, not budget, our next meeting, um, is scheduled for January third.
Okay.
So don't we have...
We do not wanna cancel that one, I wanna put wages on the agenda for that meeting. I think that committee is going to need to have some serious discussions about where this is all being funded from.
I guess it's my opinion that, uh, just to take care of the employees, even if we have to, uh, have a, an accountability from one of the CIP funds to cover the, the full, the grand total back pay. The money that's involved with some of the CIP accounts, um, is quite considerable, and if we were to even push one or two projects back six months, that would cover what we're looking at right now, where we wouldn't really have to feel too much of a budget pinch. So discussing where part, which is gonna come from, like, there's, you might guess that I, I think it'd be a lot less painful to take it out of the CIP if we could, to transfer this over to keep employees content. What do you guys think? I kinda hate to touch CIP, because the department has to fight for that every cycle. Can we, can we go from ten to fifteen? Can we go to from five to ten?
Let's do the cut.
Because they have items, and everything with our lovely inflation is placed what it was three, four years ago. So that twenty thousand dollar truck is not forty. Squad cars are probably close to double. I don't know where it is.
Yeah, I hate to bother...
I hate to be gloomy, but I can see a trade.
So that in ten years, it probably needs to spread across a building or something, we got some money, that's why we had the money to redo the shop, because they're building up again.
But not those numbers be, be, uh, laboratory, say, you know, next month, dollars for one project to be done, but to taper back a little bit, uh...
Sometimes they aren't...
We've kind of already done that, or done a whole project, yeah, for five, six years.
Truck, you just had a lot, we didn't have that money, it's not like you put it off.
I think that's true.
We had to put it, yeah. And when the opportunity, like, buying a building and a lot of the shop, we didn't do that.
At the end of the day...
We had the money to do it.
Everybody wants the new library, and I, I don't want the library on top of the employees' back, but we, we're like a little kid, you know, we got a thousand wants. Daddy and mommy going down the funnels. We're daddy and mommy, mommy when it comes to the funnels. Well, I'm just trying to take care of the kids. Paul, are you around next week?
All week.
Are you around?
Belinda, are you having vacation at all next week?
Um, I think I am off Friday, the twenty-third.
Can we do a special budget meeting on Wednesday? Does that give us enough time to post it?
If I post it today?
So I'd like to do a special budget meeting on Wednesday, so that the budget committee can take a look at the amounts and the funds, and make a recommendation to the council. the amounts and the funds, and make a recommendation to the council on where it should come from.
One question I thought. Do we know the magic number reserves that we need to keep there to keep our bond rating?
No, there is no magic number.
Well, the magic number is six.
Because I don't want to get below that number.
No, no.
Before the budget meeting target, can you do some digging to talk with Jessica? Is Jessica from Northern? See if she can give us some clarity on that. Because I know there's no magic number, but maybe if she can at least provide some insight.
Yeah, the state recommends six months of reserves.
Yeah.
Six months of operating.
But our bond rating is what it is, because we have, what is it, over a year of reserves, I think?
Not over a year, but we have probably about ten months. Last year, I think that's about where it was about, at ten.
And I know the concern is that if we dip down to that six-month number, it's going to increase the risk for our bond rating.
We don't want to get to that six-month.
No, right. So, but I think that's what Neil's getting at, is.
At the end of the day, we know where the bond was, the downtown truck shop.
Yep.
We could end up bonding for the library, I mean, some get to those hospitals here first, or we could open another one, there's a lot of presence under the tree.
Well, let's, let's call a special budget meeting for one o'clock on Wednesday.
Are you being close, sir? Are they offering to put a budget?
Well, I think what we've discussed here today, which is, as I'm hearing the agreement of the council or the consent, it's moving everyone up to, Public Works moving to grade eight across the board with six months of back pay. And then we're gonna enter into negotiations to figure out what the certification differential will look like. And that will be effective as of July one, twenty twenty-two, or whatever that magic date is.
Is moving Ron up with no back pay.
Right. And then popping Belinda to grade?
Eleven.
That's what I thought, I was just sort of second guessing myself. Eleven, okay, Jen to grade nine, and then doing the back pay as proposed in our sheets here today.
I don't think we should put a number on the back pay, whether it's six months or not at all, we should figure out if it's going to be that pay.
What did the client say?
Yeah, right, okay.
So the back pay for Jen and for Belinda is because they were doing another person's job? Both public works, it's because the one wasn't where it should be?
And we could even do a market study.
Okay, so I was gonna say, how are we gonna draw the line between all the other departments when it comes back, the study comes back? They haven't been paid where they should be? Is that, because those two are really separate issues, there's, you weren't being paid what you should be versus you did another person's job.
Correct.
So how are we gonna draw the line so that when this study comes back and says that everybody else has been underpaid to, where are we gonna stop it? Because again, I can't, I don't want to talk about that much, because it'll probably affect me, but I don't think we can.
We agreed to the contract because there was an agreement.
Because it was in the contract, yeah, and none of the other contracts said that there would be, okay.
Well, and the problem is that it's not in the contract, which is why our labor attorney is saying, don't do this. But. Yeah, it was one of those things that we made on the site.
After your budget meeting, it would be possible for us to have a short meeting to go over those figures. And so at our next council meeting, we're ready to approve.
Yeah, we want to approve it at the twenty-seventh meeting.
But I don't want to spend an hour at the council meeting doing what we're doing today. I would like to all be in agreement before the council meeting.
Timeline-wise, who you want to look at is December twenty-seventh at night is your council meeting. I have to do payroll the twenty-seventh in the morning. That's the final payroll of the year.
Do we want to do a special council on the twenty-third?
It's already a special council on the twenty-seventh.
I know.
You could do a special council on the twenty-second, maybe twenty-third during the day.
I'm not here on the twenty-seventh, why?
You're the one who wants one nail, suck it up.
Man, yeah, I'm gunsmoke.
Gunsmoke will be there another day.
I have to like put a bunch of questions, can you do payroll instead?
No, I may have to work, but I might.
If I had to say a process. Setting computer crashes or?
Yeah.
I think I already have a date, I think that's a holiday.
So can we do, can we do the same thing we did today, one o'clock on Friday?
The twenty-third.
Yeah.
A special city council or a working session, so it's a good.
Special city council.
So actual, physical, we can vote.
We want to vote on these, this base stuff, so she can do payroll.
I thought Neil was saying that, just so that we can just say it.
Well, either, I didn't realize it was payroll.
Okay.
Well, you're there to do a budget meeting on the twenty-third.
Twenty-first, we didn't do those things here. No. I'll tell you why.
So our first matter for contract is the twenty-second.
Um, it's up to you.
How, okay, I have some stuff early, late morning on the twenty-second, and how about we do three o'clock on the twenty-second, Thursday? Does that work for everybody?
I have to work, I can be on Thursday.
You have to work at three, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
No, we can do one. We're on, on December twenty-seventh, we can do the morning of the twenty-second, we can do it at eight.
I could.
No?
My, my, it's a little early, I don't like coffee.
No, it's not. Where you have coffee, you have to go by, I swear, between coffee and gunsmoke and whatever else, suck it up. Nine AM.
Nine AM, Thursday, the twenty-second, we're gonna have a special council meeting.
And you just run, what was on today's, the tires? And budget finance the twenty-first at one.
Yes.
So we wanted to go over budget.
So we all have a budget on the twenty-second.
So we can roll it out, it'll be a short meeting.
Yeah.
Nine AM. Just some emails will get out of here. Get smartphone, Neil, he's much better than I am. The twenty-second, too, the seven o'clock, we're wrapping gifts, twelve.
And just so everybody noticed on these, these are only calculated, but pays calculated through the first pay period in December, December fifteenth, or the coming up December twenty-ninth pay period, which is, you guys, I just want.
Are we seeing nine AM on?
Rising.
And I'm only scheduled my dentist department, so.
That'll be easier, so, and, uh, we'll go.
I got one chain or a lot.
So you can schedule it for next December, is that what?
Probably with a different dentist.
Actually, they have a recall.
Well, I think we've all got a pretty good consensus of where to go. And we are adjourned, please, please, please take some personal cookies.
If I can even my absolute.
I know where to get water.
Really?
Take, take some of these.
I have a Chinese, I mean, I'm talking.
Only one for Seattle, one for us every year. I can change it, because I'm really good, but they, I don't know. There are a couple of folks, and we don't want people to talk back to their parents.
I need to do that. And I have to be one. My. Fun question. What, Brad, fun?
Oh, I just want to know, this, yeah, since we've done this. One of the years, that's what we do, since we've got maybe.
I have a Friday, I see, I'm keeping it on the first time. Because as she crossed the crosswalk here at the stoplight, the light turned yellow, and before they got to the other side, it went red.